Thank you.
I'm going to call the Butler Community College Board of Trustees regular board meeting to order here in the Ted Dankert Boardroom at 4:30 Tuesday, January 11th. We will do the pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know. It's one nation under God.
There's no cause.
There's no cause.
I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
I still move?
Yep. There's a... There is an MOU in front of you.
And does that go where? So I'd like to add that MOU to board action items as E and Shelby.
I would just like to move Council Grove site lease from consent agenda to board action items.
So that would be E.
We need to vote on.
We need to do one motion at a time to add.
Oh, we have to do one at a time?
Alright. Moved and seconded to add the MOU. You can go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Law?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Leckinburg?
Yes.
Trustee Winslow?
Yes.
Trustee Howes not here, trustee Smith?
Yes.
Motion to add the MOU passes. And then Shelby, your motion was to move...
I would move that we move the Council Grove site lease from consent agenda to board action items.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tell me one more time Shelby.
It would become D2.
Eight, D2, the Council Grove site lease.
Okay.
Would become F under action item.
So you seconded?
I second.
Okay. Ready? Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Law?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Leckinburg?
Yes.
Trustee Winslow?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes. The motion passes.
So I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Law?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Leckinburg?
Yes.
Trustee Winslow? Yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes. The approval of the agenda passes. The next item is the swearing in of the new trustees, and I think we decided the best way to do that, if the three of you could stand behind the podium there where the mic can catch all of you, and I will hold mine. Swear you in and then take your seats accordingly. Where do you... Could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas. And faithfully discharge the duties of the trustee Butler Community College. So help me God. Congratulations. So I will turn the gavel over to Forrest as the remaining officer of the board to conduct the officer appointments and elections.
I know.
How are you?
I'm good. Water, got your coffee over there. Yeah, I can move a little.
Yeah, I can screw down this way if that makes more sense. Try not to screw this up too badly. I think next up, we will entertain nominations for the board officer and appointments, starting with the position of chair.
I would motion to nominate one of our current board members, Shelby Smith.
Mister, let's see, Mister Rhodes?
Second.
Okay.
I would second.
Hey, we have Shelby Smith nominated. Do you have any other nominations?
Do I nominate now? I would like to nominate Forrest Rhodes as chairman.
We have a second.
I'll second.
I move nomination cease.
Do we vote or discuss to close nominations?
You have to have a second and then...
And then Rock said that you vote in order of the way that the nomination is.
We're not, we're not voting to close nominations, we're voting on the actual nominee, so...
Do we have to discuss that or is that proper in Robert's rules? Because I would have liked to discuss it.
Discuss your identity, you nominated.
No. No, I just need to remind people that they have conflicts of interest. And I would prefer a chair that had no conflicts of interest. Sorry, I know that that does not sit well. It's not personal, it's just business.
Absolutely is personal, but you made your point. Call, so we'll just call for a roll call vote then for the position of chair first for Shelby Smith.
Trustee Good?
Did you have some?
No, I was just going to say go around in the order.
Correct. No.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly?
No.
Skip. Trustee Rhodes? Or do I?
I don't think.
Trustee Rhodes?
No.
Trustee Winslow?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
So nomination.
I, yeah, sorry, I called.
That's alright, yes. We will now vote on myself as chair.
Yes. And that's...
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
No.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Winslow?
No.
Trustee Shear? Trustee Smith?
So congratulations Forrest.
Thank you.
New chairman.
I will, I will become better equipped at Robert's rules than I appear to be at this point in time, so I will make that commitment. So with that, I guess I will continue to chair the meeting. We'll now take nominations for vice chair.
Let me nominate trustee Smith.
I'll second.
And I'd like to nominate Mary Martha Good.
Any other nominations?
So...
So we're voting on Shelby as vice chair.
Trustee Good?
No.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly?
No.
Trustee Rhodes?
No.
Trustee Winslow?
Yes.
Trustee Shear? Trustee Smith?
Yes.
That's four, three, no. So we'll now roll call vote for Mary Martha as vice chair.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
No.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Winslow?
No.
Trustee Shear? Trustee Smith?
No.
That is four, three, so Mary Martha, congratulations.
Thank you.
On becoming vice chair. Would now entertain nominations for secretary treasurer.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to nominate Linda Jolly for secretary treasurer.
Does everyone let's work down or something?
We have a second. And the other nominations for secretary treasurer. There ain't none.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Winslow?
No.
Trustee Shear? Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Six to one. Congratulations on becoming secretary treasurer.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We have now several positions for officer and appointments. The first being the KACCT delegate.
Mister Chairman, I would like to nominate Kim. How do you say?
Brungart.
Just Brungart?
Yeah.
Brungart for KACCT delegate.
These we just volunteered for last time.
Oh, are they?
Yeah.
Kim, how would you like to be on that?
I have no idea what I'm even volunteering for. I'm going to just be quiet.
Arthur, you're doing a fine job.
I do it now. We meet at different community colleges every three months. All trustees nominate one from their consortium, and they all meet, take their presidents, talk about things that are going on at the state level, community college level, and within each community college. It's interesting. Fascinating to see how different and yet how opposite we are. It's good.
Yeah, I, I can do it, that's fine. I just, I mean, it's once every three months.
It's two days.
Yeah. The, an override thing. And just different parts of the state.
Yeah, you go through rotations to different community colleges, you know, so it makes... Through all of these now, it's because you just need four. The next meeting actually is in February. So you know the date, February. I have some hearings. Is it normally?
I might go to it to that.
Is it normally a weekend or a weekday?
Friday and Saturday.
Well, the lessons will probably be on Thursday, but I'll check the date for sure.
Could you be an alternative she's got?
I would love to be.
Well, they don't do alternatives.
Oh, we're my way in there.
Yeah. Just appoint both of them, that's fine.
Thank you, Kim, for doing that. The board finance committee, there's two, two positions. One, by definition, is the vice chair, so Mary Martha will, will have one of those, and then we'll designate one other. This committee, what meets for about an hour before, immediately before each monthly board meeting. So 3:30 on the Tuesday before the, the board meeting. Two of them must fall too, really. And everybody.
They had expressed the interest previously. I don't know what orientation that you thought that that might be.
No, I'd have to do it if someone else doesn't want to. I have the time to be able to come to meetings and...
And the meetings are open to everybody.
Yeah, they are.
Thank you, Linda, Mary Martha, thanks for continuing. Foundation board liaison, I, I've been a foundation board member before and was liaison last year for the last two years. I'm happy to, to continue to do that. The educational facilities authority. I would as well. That sounds right in your eyes.
Do you, because capital projects, Julie, and I think, can I talk about...
I don't think I was on Capital Project before, but I wish we did.
Will you?
Doug, Doug will do it.
That's right, you were. Sorry, Charlie.
No, that's alright. Do you have an interest in capital projects given the... Sure. Your background. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Capital development. Yeah, for sure. So if somebody else wants to do the education facilities on, on capital projects. Anyone like to join Dave on educational facilities?
Sure.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
If anybody else wants to, you know, please, please shout out, but yeah, I'll do that.
Shelby and Julie, are you all comfortable on capital projects? I'm happy to be on. Or Julie, you'd be continuing on there?
Yeah, that's... But do we have a, do we can depend on the KACCT? I'm sorry, Mister Chair. Do we depend on the KACCT to actually keep us informed as to legislation going through? I think we maybe need somebody on the board that actually keeps really good track of that. There's so many changes that are slated to come through this year. I, I think it would be important to...
We get updates after every meeting from either Mary Martha, when she was there, or from Dr. Paul.
If you would subscribe to Haba reports, it would really give you detailed what happens every day.
Do you think during legislative session, from the presence of each week, she provides pertinent legislative updates that impact this board of directors?
Well, I'm on the different, I'm on different emails and so forth, and different newsletters for different legislators, so as long as somebody's keeping track and we're comfortable with that particular entity keeping track for us as a board. I just want to make sure that we do that. I just hear there's so much games coming through the...
Yep.
Mary Martha, what was, was there a report that's subrisable?
Haba reports, it's, it's pretty expensive, but it's, I mean, you get a report every single day. You must remember though, whatever happens in the House then has to go to the Senate and vice versa. So it's not the golden rule.
I just check them online. If I see them come through, I just start getting online.
H A W E R, Haba reports.
That is expensive.
It is. And I'd be more than glad to forward you mine every day if you wanted it. There's seven days that just aren't, mostly birthdays, nothing, you know.
Do not forget the birthdays.
Well, thanks for everybody for, for volunteering for the positions, and I think now that takes us to recognitions.
Right.
A, a quick thought before, if it's possible, could I go around and say their name and what they do or some such thing?
Good idea.
I'm not, I don't really know David or Linda. I mean, I shook your hand at a parade once, but that's all I know about them.
Thanks, Shelby, sorry.
Well, I...
I think it's...
That's fine, go ahead. Do you want to start? Just... Oh, I guess. Shelby Smith, I graduated here in 94. I've got nine kids. I live in a church, I have two businesses.
How many weddings have you had in the church?
Only one so far.
I thought it was two. Oh. That's really something.
My name is Dave Shear. I'm a retired educator in USD 259, and I'm spending some of my time substituting at USD 490. And that's, I've been a, I have a, I am an eldereup. I was born here in El Dorado, I was raised in El Dorado. Went to school in Fort Worth State, got my master's from Friends University in school leadership and secondary school leadership and, or primary through secondary school leadership. It says school leadership on the degree. And I, there was a period of time where I went to school in Fort Worth State and moved to Topeka, Kansas, and taught in the Topeka, Kansas area, and then lived in South Louisiana on offshore drilling rigs in Denver, Colorado, and then back to the El Dorado area and retired from teaching.
Yeah.
You can turn around and look at yourself if you want.
My name's Julie Winslow, and I, this is my third year on the board. I'm basically retired. I have about a 35-year career in cost accounting for military applications. If anybody knows anything about that, it's a pretty sticky business. So that's where I come from. I also was a site auditor for most of the companies that I worked for, so that anybody that came in the door that said that we're going to audit, they had to see me or my group first. But that was exciting, which is why sometimes I'm a little anal when it comes to getting answers as far as our financials. But anyway, I've enjoyed it, it's a lot of fun. I don't have as much as you do. I substitute. I do have a license, but I don't, I don't substitute anymore, or I, I just, I'm too busy, to be honest. Too busy now that I'm retired. Way too busy. Come on, Mary Martha, you know that's true. It's going to get worse.
You think?
Oh, yeah, I promise.
I have a job interview next week.
Alright, what are you going to do?
Funeral home.
Cool.
Can't wait.
Are you going to be putting the makeup on?
Dying to get in there. I've heard that one. Yes, yes, yes. Lord.
Are you going to be putting makeup on or are you going to...
I'd love to.
Really?
Seriously.
Is that what you're going to do? We're, we're live streaming. Everybody remember? Goodbye.
Oh, my name is Forrest Rhodes. I'm, I've been on the board for, starting my third year. Have, an attorney, worked for a law firm in Wichita, but have lived in El Dorado since I graduated in law school. So it's going on 22 years next month. Two kids, both grown, but both received a kind of benefit from public intelligence coming through before they, they went on to do other things.
And?
Yeah, I have a new grandbaby that will be one year old on Sunday.
Oh, my gosh.
Jolly, at the end of the year, I retired from being the executive director for El Dorado Inc. for 18 years. I intend to do some consulting, at least for the next year or two. And I have five grandchildren, and everybody needs to be someplace all the time. So my daughter yesterday asked for help today, and it's the first day I couldn't help. So I'll keep this.
My name's Kim Brungart. I'm a Blue STEM graduate, then came to Butler for a year, and then I graduated from J State with an accounting degree. Went into the accounting field for two years until I decided I couldn't stand the corporate world and started selling real estate. A lot of people know me as Chuck Cortez's daughter, a lot of people know me as Tanner Brungart's mom. I've been in real estate for about 24, 25 years. I'm a commercial real estate advisor now. Most of what I do is litigation, highway acquisition, power line acquisition, that type of thing, or a lot of residential reports, that's just kind of where my specialty lies, I guess.
Well, I'm Mary Martha Loretta Schreiber-Good. I'll just tell you one thing that you, I think you guys know about me. But I used to sell cars for my dad, and I took over the dealership when I was thirty-some years old. Chevy, Oldson Cadillac had a wonderful career doing that, but my husband rescued me, he says. And got me away from that high-stress job. And I, I love El Dorado and being married and having a grandchild, one. No, I have two, excuse me.
Oh, you better hope you're...
So we're not watching. Were you a new car saleswoman or a used car salesman?
New.
Oh, good, that's better.
My grandpa was a used person. Being a teacher is much less stressful. Well, let's move on to recognitions.
Okay, thank you. And if you don't mind, I'm going to sit. I want to take some time to recognize Lance and Doug. And even though Jim's not here, we're going to recognize Jim too for their years of service on the board. And typically, when we do this, we kind of go through and talk about some of the significant things that have happened under their leadership while we say thank you. So Jim joined the board in July of 2013. It was actually kind of fun. I went back through every single board book from the time that Jim joined the board and looked at the agendas and kind of looked through the board books. And so it was really kind of a, a, you know, fun for me to do that, because you forget things over time. So Jim came on in July of 2013 and of course, served until this month. We were just starting a big electrical upgrade with Snyder at the time when he came on the board, and, and he was on the board just about the time that I was hired. There was a lot of discussion at that point in time, reverse transfer agreements were starting to be more and more prevalent, where students were going on to four-year institutions and being able to transfer hours back to complete their associate's degree. So that was becoming kind of a big deal. Early that next spring, we did, the board was, approved the renovation of the Anatomy and Physiology Lab in the 5,000 building in Andover. We had not had lab space over there, and that, that was adequate. And so they made that decision. Early that spring, approved the replacement of the old, if you remember, the old wooden bleachers in the, in the gym, and how old and raggity and weak and seemed to be treacherous they were. We, we changed those out to what we have now. Spring was when that big hailstorm came through here and ruined every roof on campus, for the most part, and damaged all of the cars except for two. And, and so we spent a lot of the summer then working on, starting to work with the insurance company on settlement and starting those roof repairs. Later that fall, approved the fire science training tower, the first part of that training tower that we're now, that the trustees have now approved adding, you know, additional training pots to. That next spring, in April, was when the board approved and authorized the capital outlay, the two-mill capital outlay. And I know that that, you know, was, has been sort of controversial over the last number of years, but I know that those 11 or 12 digital transformation projects that were part of that capital mill outlay positioned us unbeknownst at the time for us to make that significant transition in March of 2020, when we all went remote to teaching, faculty were, were teaching. Everybody was working remotely and our students were learning. And if we had not had those projects in place over that period of time, we'd have been in real difficulty. That, that spring, also, we formalized our nursing partnership with KU School of Nursing, so that our nursing students could finish their BSN here at the same time they were finishing their ADNs, and that's been a really success. All agree. You know, we also rain that summer, lots and lots of rain. We replaced the gym floor twice that summer, because the city, there were city sewer, city sewer and city, I don't know, storm sewer problems, and they had part of the first new gym floor laid, and it flooded, and they had to pull it up and relay the second gym floor. So anyway, that was an interesting summer. That fall, everyone worked really hard, and that's when we implemented guided pathways. That next spring in May was when this college was designated as an ACT career, College and Career Readiness Campaign, National Exemplar Career Preparedness Award winner. So that was really exciting. And then that summer also, we started through the process of a master site and facilities planning process. Lance came on in July of 17. And that next spring, Butler was named an Aspen Institute Top 150 Community College, and we started the discussion, some of that discussion that surrounded the renovation of the 5,000 building, naming the architect, getting the construction manager, RIS, working with bond counsel to, to get that all done. And that was obviously a significant process. In June, that next year, June of 19, we approved the bids for the 5,000 building. We did some science lab renovations in Rose Hill. We did some science lab renovations in Rose Hill, approved the HR consulting study. And also that spring, we had our first report on the savings, our student savings based on the OERs that had been developed at that point in time. Had a great team of, of departmental faculty and academic leadership that worked on getting that process started. And so in June then, Doug came on, June of 19, Doug took Joanne Cravens' spot when she retired from the board. And so he kind of came on midstream. That fall, in September, we were named a National Center of Academic Excellence in Cyber Defense Education. We received that designation. We also launched our economic impact study. We hadn't done one for about six years, I think, five or six years. And so we launched our EMSI study that, that fall. In March of 2020, we all know what happened. Went remote, everything went online. And we spent all spring online, teaching and learning and working to the huge lift of, obviously, everyone involved and with huge board support to make that happen. We also started the discussions about renovation of the 100 and 200 buildings and making the switch to get IS into one location and move English and, and the academic areas all into the other building. We also started to transition back to campus that summer slowly but surely to, to bring people back to work and, and get ready for fall classes. In September that year, we approved the construction technology program. We also approved the cybersecurity agreement that we have in place with Tandem cybersecurity to manage that piece of our day-to-day business operations and our, all of our IT cybersecurity issues. We also had money that summer and fall stimulus money, we started to see that we started to then distribute to students. The next spring, early in March, we did some board training. We approved Diesel Tech. We started our discussions about the sale of the 9,100 building. We continued to see throughout the process additional stimulus funds that came to us. And identification would begin with the board's help of how those funds should be allocated and spent. This past spring, of course, the historic gift individual, largest individual gift to the, the college in the college's history for the culinary program through the foundation. We also prepared in May to launch the Kansas Promise Scholarship Act in the fall. And so they really worked through the summer to, to get all of that in place to offer those funds to students starting this past fall. Board made some big decisions throughout the summer again. Deciding to, to move to self-funded insurance, final approval of the Diesel Tech program. We looked at updated strategic plan. You approved the joint partnership between Johnson County's Culinary Program and our program to allow our students to sit for their national certifications. Approved the electrical infrastructure project that's in progress right now. In the fall, approved Adobe Creative Campus, deferred maintenance projects. And so lots and lots of things that have happened under your leadership. And most recently, of course, the sale of the 9,100 building. Approval to send on pastry arts and masonry and upgrades in the gym. And so, you know, it's when you stop to think about the impact that you have on students and their success, it's really significant. And in between all of that, multiple Kansas border regions performance agreements, strategic plan updates, budget approvals, expansion, just in the last four years of our early college academies. We started with seven students in 2010, maybe Heather, is that right? Or somewhere in there. And in the past four years, we've had 326 graduates under the board's leadership to finish their associate's degrees at the same time they're finishing their high school diplomas. And that's really impactful. Since Jim came on the board in 2013 through these last years, we have had students take more than 1.25 million credit hours through Butler, which is pretty significant as well. We've approved a number of neighborhood revitalization agreements with our Butler County communities, implemented Avid and Avizo. Have gone through a math redesign that has helped our students finish their math curriculum and their degrees. Faculty development team has done some significant work within the faculty for professional development and support in classrooms. Gosh, we've had, then, you know, you think about all of the, the championships and the success. Livestock judging team has had multiple team championships with All-Americans named every year. We've had so many student awards for Phi Theta Kappa and PBL and the Kansas Association of Broadcasters. The Great Plains Conference on Acceleration got launched and has become very successful. So it's a multi-state conference now where people come to campus. And then, of course, athletic successes that are really, you know, too numerous to mention. Championships in softball, athletic All-Americans. Every spring, we name, you know, lots and lots of students that are academic scholars. Conference and Region Six championships, coaches with record program wins. And so you, you know, when you think about, again, the impact that you have on students and student success lots of times because you're approving, you know, big action items or something like that. You also don't think sometimes about just the day-to-day things that you as board members support that allow us to do our jobs and to impact the students every day that we work with. And so for Lance and Doug, we have a little gift of appreciation for you. And I've got one for Jim as well. And so we wanna, as a board and as college administrators and college community, wanna say thank you for all you do. And Lance is outgoing chair. This is kind of a crazy thing to do, but we have a gift, this isn't yours. You have a gift similar to this, but our, the instrumentation that does this is getting its motherboard replaced. And so once we have this done, our engineering technology department will create a medallion for you as a board chair. As a gift for all of us for your services as a board chair. So, thank you very much. Stay if you want to or. So, thank you. I don't know if anybody else has comments that they wanna make any of the other board members. You're welcome to if you want to, but.
Thanks for all your, thanks for all your hard work.
Appreciate it.
Only one meeting a month?
Would entertain a motion and for, for the, for the newcomers, the executive session, the language for the executive session motion is on page four of the board book. Are compliant, but would entertain a motion to move into executive session.
And Ray's not going to join us. So when you do the motion, you don't need to name Ray.
Mr. Chair. I move that the board recess into executive session to discuss negotiations pursuant to the open meetings exceptions for matters relating to employer, employee negotiations and that the members of the board, President Kim Crowell, Bill Rinconbaugh, Dr. Phil Sperry, Shelley Stoltz and Kent Williams be included. Cross Shelley. And it looks like for about 20 minutes.
We have a second. Shelby seconded.
Trustee Good.
Yes.
Trustee Brungart.
Yes.
Trustee Jolly.
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes.
Yes.
Trustee Winslow.
Yes.
Trustee Sheer.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Okay, we will move into executive session. We'll set our time once we get, once we get actually into it electronically.
Thank you.
Get a chair. I'm gonna film this.
Well, there's cold air blowing.
I thought I was the only one that was feeling cold air blow.
Where is Lisa Boland's office?
Okay, we are back out of executive session. Do we have any public comment?
No, nothing came through my office.
We ask for, we ask anyone that wants to speak publicly to let Kim's office know ahead of time. So we usually have an idea ahead of time whether there's going to be.
Yeah, they can call and leave a message or talk to us or there's a form that they can fill out on the website. Or they can show up at the meeting and request to speak as well.
Okay, we'll move then to standing reports. I understand, I guess, student government, they are enjoying their winter break still. So no report from them. And I understand we don't have an op staff report this month either. So. Terry, the floor is yours.
It has been my honor since becoming president of the association to get to announce our annual selection of the master teacher. The master teacher award represents the best of the best at this community college and in my mind in the state. The master teacher award has been around for going on 50 years now and represents an extraordinary bunch of people. Yesterday, at our general professional development days session, we announced this year's master teacher. I am going to simply plagiarize from the person who nominated him. If the definition of a master teacher is one who not only has mastered the basics of teaching, but one who goes above and beyond to ensure a positive learning experience for each student and who shares his or her knowledge with the broader learning community. Then it is easy to understand why this year's recipient of the Butler master teacher award was an obvious choice. Our 2022 master has been a teacher for more than 30 years. And after more than three decades in the classroom, has never tired of sharing with students the fundamentals and philosophy of his subject matter. He is not only a successful classroom teacher, but his expertise is felt outside of the classroom. He has served as an advisor for some of Butler's extracurricular activities, including the award winning The Grizzly Magazine and Butler's highly successful student sports media. A program whose students under his tutelage have won numerous print and broadcast awards. His favorite part of teaching is seeing the students take pride in producing information for an audience, not just to please the teacher. All successful teachers, he understands that a successful teacher is a collaborator. And is quick to credit his colleagues in his department as a reason for his success. He exemplifies the highest standards of a Butler teacher. Please join me in congratulating our 2022 Butler master teacher, teacher of the highest standards, a gentleman of the highest integrity, Professor Mike Swan. Professor Mike Swan is a professor in the mass communications department. And for those of you that have been on the board for, well, for a little while, you've seen Mike come in with his students to show off their awards. I would also comment on Mike that he's one of those people that if I pick up the phone and asking for some help on something, he will step up and jump in. So if you see Professor Swan around the campus, around the community, please congratulate him. He is very deserving of this award. The master teacher is made aware shortly after the decision is made in the fall, but it's a closely kept secret. Yeah, woe to the committee member. If I could have, I had just a few more things. I mean, nobody else. In anticipation of what I hope will be a positive action later on this meeting. On behalf of the professional employees, I thank all of the board members present and past for this gesture concerning our salary raise for the last semester. Your professional employees very much appreciate the offer and stepped up very quickly when it was time to prove it on their end. Thank you. And I told them, by the way, that if they see you around the communities, to go out of their way to come up and thank you. This is Rhonda Thomas. She's one of our business instructors. She made the mistake of telling me she was going to be here tonight. And so I told her I would ask her to hand out some things for me. We didn't get a chance to do any orientation with you. And so I thought I'd spend a little bit of my time tonight doing just a little bit of orientation for the new board members and a bit of a refresher for, and we'll call you the old board members, the experienced board members. Seasons, seasons board members probably isn't that deal. You wouldn't believe what it took to put this pamphlet. Mary Martha?
I have a question. How many teachers are KNEA members?
Right now, I believe our last count here at Butler was 87 faculty and advisors.
Thank you.
And I don't have the breakdown between those two groups.
Thank you.
160, I think, was the last I heard from Shell. Okay, just to hit some of the highlights, I'm not going to read this to you, but I thought I'd hit some highlights. The association is the representative organization for the professional employees here at Butler. We're the ones who represent the instructors, the advisors, and the counselors at any college or regional events which involve their jobs, qual their jobs, qual their professional interests or subject matter. Our membership consists of all full-time professional employees, which are include the faculty, the advisors, and the counselors. All professional employees are eligible to join the association. And in fact, it's close to arm twisting to try to get as many as we can to join the association for a number of reasons. But when we negotiate our contract, we negotiate for all of the professional employees. And we listen to all of the professional employees. Those who join the association are the ones that choose the organization leadership. And by that extension, also the negotiating team. What do we do for the professional employees? Well, we, of course, bargain their contract. I come before you every month to say hello and remind you that you've got the best faculty advisors and counselor state of Kansas. We have representation on the president's executive council. We represent our membership to the state and national levels of the organization. We also represent professional employees when issues do come up in order to safeguard their, their rights and to make sure that things are being done appropriately. We also award the association's student scholarship as well as, as we just saw, choosing the master teacher. We are affiliated with the KNEA and the National Education Association. The advantages to be, to affiliating with these organizations are enormous for us as an organization with the amount of resources that they provide for us, but also for the members who rely on the organization for not just legal and other sorts of representations, but also we have a pretty robust set of other benefits, including professional liability insurance. We are governed by a set of bylaws that are approved by the KNEA and ratified by our membership. These bylaws are periodically revised and ratified as, I'm sure you know, matters change in time. Our current board is myself, Sam Sparks, professor of theater. Treasurer is Dr. Noreen Templin, professor of economics. Our secretary is Professor Mac Thompson, who is an English professor. And then our KNEA representative assembly delegates. Myself and I didn't put these in here, see. Ryan Yoslay. Shree Onkapara and Xavier Drive. We, the, so Mary Martha.
One of your dues, my dues, and I'll tell you my dues for retired KDA is $40. But I think active is what, about 200, 300?
Oh, I wish. We pay around 660.
A year?
A year.
You know, it's a shame, as hard as you guys all work, that you can't maybe make the others who are not in the association pay a little bit. But that's not how KNEA works.
That question happens way above my pay.
I know, I know.
That's sort of against the law.
What's, what's that?
We're charging other members even.
Oh, you can't do that, but they work so hard for everybody, for all teachers and faculty.
I was a 28-year member.
Well, thank you. Right now, our bargaining team consists of myself, Professor John Jenkinson, Dr. John Jenkinson, I'm sorry. Jamie Williams, who's a faculty or a student advisor. Professor Camille Freeman, math instructor. Professor Greg May, a speech instructor. And then Professor Sam Sparks, our vice president, who is professor of theater. Our, oh, I did list our, already, you know, it's good for me. At any rate, we, the KNEA and the NEA are very democratic organizations in the sense that we are very member driven. We meet once a year to set policy, budgets, and other sorts of action items that govern the coming year for the KNEA and at the NEA level as well. And Butler has always been an active member of the representative assembly. As an organization, we provide a different but important perspective. People that talk to us are the people right on the ground in our advising offices, the classrooms, and the counselor's office. Their views are. We are held accountable, our membership, as we are elected to our positions. And not only that, but if I say something tonight that someone doesn't agree with, I promise you I will hear about it by tomorrow. So we are all accountable to our, both our members, but also all of the professional employees.
Mr. Chu, may I ask a question?
Yeah, or is this appropriate?
No, yeah, it's a God.
I was just wondering, you were talking about accountability. I have mass. I was just wondering, is there any kind of, I guess, survey, for lack of a better term, that the teachers complete every year to turn into maybe a private company that does the survey on, I guess, what their feelings are on adequate equipment, adequate facilities?
We, we survey our members. We, we survey our, our members and all the professional employees periodically on a variety of matters. The, of course, via the master agreement, the college does a survey every year to evaluate our supervisors.
What, what is that called?
What is that called? I don't know. It comes, it comes to my. I don't either.
Is that conducted by?
It's, it's, it's conducted by a college research division. It's a Qualtrix. Yeah, she used to take care of it. Yeah.
Where's our research person? No, is he? Oh, there he is. Yep. Where? On the, he was on the, there is.
There he is!
You're muted, Isom. I can't see.
Unmute.
And I don't have a jacket or, or a handkerchief today. Sorry. Yes, those, I heard, I heard the question that Terry was trying to answer. Periodically, the surveys are done, they're commissioned by our HR unit. I don't believe we have done it in a couple of years, but I'll check and get back to you guys.
Thanks, Isom.
I just know when it hits my email box.
Do we have a, does the board ever get a copy of those? Or do we get a chart or some kind of a? I don't know. I don't, I don't ever see it. So.
I don't know what happens to it.
We'll find out. I'll find out from Isom where it's housed. It might, it might go to HR. Maybe it goes, Tom's new, so you may be like, no. Yeah, I mean, he's been here just, you know, since July, so it may go back to the academic departments. It may go back to the academic departments for them to review with the deans and associate deans. We'll find out.
Isom, did you have something else?
No, we'll find out. I'm going to touch base with HR, find out, and let you guys know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
The last point I want to emphasize is that we are part of the college. We are not part of the administrative structure and thus not subject to, not subject to a particular view of how things are. We, as I said, we reflect the views of our colleagues. And we, we think that's an important thing. We think it's important that you hear, not just from on top, but also below. Yes, that's where I am. Okay. Rhonda, if you want to hand up, as I'm sure you were told in your executive session, we have moved out of federal mediation and into the fact-finding process of impasse. And thus, well, frankly, what that means is negotiations are over. There are no more proposals or counter-proposals or discussions around the table, as it were. All this left are facts and the fact finder. And it occurred to some of us that maybe now's the time to put before the board our view of this particular issue. Of course, we're never sure what information you get regarding the issues discussed in negotiations. But we thought now, if you would indulge me anyway, would be a good time to talk to you very briefly about how we see this final issue that has forced us into fact-finding. This elimination of the early retirement benefit for those with who, who want to have plus one and family still covered by the board, once they've taken early retirement.
Take a very brief, very light, we have a process for going through this, now is not the process.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Very quickly, we see this as a, an early retirement incentive and one that frankly, we think has worked quite well. And we think early retirement incentives are important. We love what we do. Every one of us looks forward to that first day of class, when we can finally get in front of our students, be with our students. That's what we live for. But it takes its toll over time. And when you're ready to not do that anymore, you're ready to not do it. And we don't want folks in the classroom or in the advising offices or counselors who simply don't want to be there anymore. It's better for students, it's better for the college as a whole, if we have some process for a graceful exit when people get to that point. And that's what the early retirement benefits provide. And I'll let you look at the numbers that are attached to this on your own. The proposal that administration has made would remove that incentive for some of those early retirees. And it's an open question as to whether then they would actually choose early retirement. If I am ready to leave the classroom and go on my capers pension, but I have to turn around and buy insurance for my spouse out on the open insurance market or from the college, as that is, or their proposal, out of my limited capers pension, I may very well decide that, well, I may, I don't like doing this anymore, but I'm going to gut it out until I at least get to Medicare age. Well, that's not good for me. That's not good for the college. It's not good for the students. I mean, I, I just wonder about anyone who would consider taking early retirement, if they really had to go out and spend part of that limited pension on their spouse's insurance. So I think this takes away an important benefit. We also wonder why this has come up. We, this is the first time this benefit has ever actually been a point of disagreement. In fact, it was administration years ago who brought it to the table because it actually saves the college money. By retiring a longer, longer, well, a long time higher salary employee and replacing them with a new professional employee that's going to come in at a lower salary. The college saves money on that salary, even after paying the extra premiums for that professional employee's spouse, the college still saves money. And I included that in that information.
Anything else?
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board minutes, please. Shall we? Any updates?
I could not make it today.
So we had Mary Martha and Linda and Dave sitting in and Kent. We went through the statement of revenues and expenditures and then Kent spent a little bit of time starting to go back through the designated funds and some of the things and the supplemental information that comes out of the, the bunch of updates and stuff. So. You kind of just, kind of just educational today is what it was, I guess.
Foundation Board Report, Foundation Board has not that, so I do not have anything to update on that front.
You have, I think I paper clipped some things together for you at each of your spots. You have the Cora request printout.
Yeah, this is correct.
Well, it was correct as of yesterday, Julie.
Well, I've got.
Why don't we let Dr. Croll finish her report?
It is correct as of yesterday, when I printed this off, according to what Meredith had sent me. I'm certainly happy to update it and send you out additional information. And you can let me know after the meeting what's incorrect about it.
Can we make questions on these now?
To the chair, I guess.
Well, let's, why don't we let Dr. Croll finish her report and then?
Okay. The closing on the 9100 building has been scheduled for January 28th. And so we'll get that done. Looking for, you know, the documents that go along with that, we'll review all of those documents and everything. So that'll be finalized the end of the month. Ireland and Bill Young, you know, making sure that all the, if there's any contents left in the building, that those will be out, you know, in time. So. Had a little bit of information from Heather Morgan, who's the executive director again of KCCT. There's currently a legislative breakfast scheduled, the 2022 Kansas Legislative Breakfast with the members of the legislature. Is scheduled for January 29th in the basement of the Kansas State House from eight to nine. I know some of the committee meetings start at 8:30, so it'll be, you know, be pretty short. But we have not been able to have breakfast with them for a couple of years in the State House because of COVID. And so. it'll be, you know, be pretty short, but we have not been able to have breakfast with them for a couple of years in the state house because of COVID. And so they're planning one this year. Hopefully it'll, you know, still remain in place. But if you're interested in going or being in attendance, let me know. I'm going to try to set up some individual appointments with some of our representatives. It's, sometimes it's hard because of committee meetings, but I'm going to spend some time on the phone this week. I'm trying to set up some individual appointments. And so if you are interested in meeting me there, I'd be glad to have you join me. I have, I have some other things that I'm doing that day in Topeka, so I'm not going to turn around and come right back after it's over with. But yet there's some of you that want to try and write together. We can probably figure that out. 27th.
January 27th.
No, it's the 27th.
Any maybe we could do a luncheon up there instead of trying to meet with them?
You don't want to get up at five?
Well, no, what I'm saying is the breakfast is fine, but house meets at 11, senate meets at two.
I can see if any of them are available for lunch.
I didn't.
It's really, really difficult. When, I mean, when I've been up there before for these things, it's really hard to get scheduled.
It is.
So. So Mary Martha, you're interested? Julie, you're interested? Dave, are you interested in going? Did you say you don't know for sure?
I don't know for sure yet.
Okay. Well, let me know because I want to let Heather Morgan know and, you know, be mindful and respectful of what she's doing on her end. And so I will reach out to you to confirm that. I also have been asked to serve on the, Dr. Norine Kurochi, who's the former Newman University president, serves on the KU Medical School Advancement Board that's in Wichita. And she called me a few weeks ago and asked if I would be willing to serve on that board. They're reaching out to some of their other educational partners to just have, you know, additional representation on the board. And, and so I would ask your support in being able to do that since it's an outside commitment. They only meet quarterly. Next meeting or my first meeting would be in February. And I think it's a good opportunity to represent Butler and be part of that conversation because we have significant number of students that, you know, come to us and finish their gen eds and go on to health sciences and med school and stuff. So is that, is that okay with you if I agree?
I think it's great.
Thank you. Wanted to give you a little bit of an update. We just had a recent update from Heather Ward, who's the Director of Financial Aid. Our current 2021, 2022 total estimated awards for Kansas Promise Act for fall and into spring to this point in time is $247,000, $247,638 awarded to 101 students. We still have some pending applications for spring. There have been, you know, through the, through the fall and spring, some offers that students have denied or declined for a variety of reasons. Some of the requirements are pretty stringent to have to stay in the state and they have to be enrolled in specific programs and they have to complete, you know, in, in 30 months. So some awards were declined or canceled by students. We also have a number of applications that have been denied on our end for, again, a variety of reasons. They either aren't enrolling in the right program. They aren't going to be enrolled in the right number of credit hours. They don't qualify, you know, financially or whatever, but wanted to give you an update on that.
Dr. Kroll?
Yeah.
Does that start then this semester?
It started, we, those first awards were this past fall.
Past fall, okay.
Yeah. And I will, at some point in time, I'll be able to give you a dollar amount for the, the total amount of awards across the system. There's going to be a trailer bill that comes through the legislature this time around to kind of clean up some of the language and some of the gaps in that that scholarship act. But it certainly has been, been beneficial to a number of students. You have also in front of you the code of ethics. I think it was clipped to your information, the code of ethics policy and then a disclosure form. Please fill that disclosure form out and hand that to me before you leave tonight. And that way I'll have them all and I won't have to track you down. And then I have to get them also from the administrators as well. I haven't given them their copies yet.
Are we keeping these now?
And then the last thing on my list, I wanted to let you know that Julie filed a complaint with the Attorney General's Office about an open meeting violation from the November 9th, 2021 meeting. We received notice of it the very end of last week and it's being addressed right now, reviewing it and being addressed by legal counsel. So we'll keep you apprised of that as well. So I think that's what I have for my president's report. I also, sorry, Kim and Dave and Linda, like a little profile sheet I'm going to hand out to you to write down your preferred email and preferred address and all of that sort of stuff for me, please.
We, we moved along from the Cora list. Some of this might be relevant to our discussion on board governance, which is already on the agenda, but if there's anyone has questions about that, I know Julie wanted to, there's a correction.
Yeah, I've got, I've got the original email. I, I don't know why I sent it. Actually, I sent a copy of that original email to Kim as well as you. So that's what I would prefer in here is what I actually asked for instead of.
Well, sometimes Canton, when they log that in, they'll paraphrase it. But I'm happy, we're happy to copy and paste it.
I'll tell you what I'd really rather do is if you're going to do this, this is fine, but include emails that I send, if you don't mind.
All right. They, they do it. Meredith does it out of Kent's office.
Yes. The college closed what day for faculty and staff?
December 22nd, I think was our first day.
So December 22nd and you opened back up January 3rd. So we, we on 12:30 when she filed a core request.
I knew they were closed. I didn't expect to hear.
That's not how a core request is gone. They have, they are legally binded for three days that they have to get the information. So I would suggest.
Mary, you just have to have a reply that they're going to.
Yes. And when you're going to get it.
I still am upset about this.
I get, I'm just.
This, to me, this is like my heavens. And I would like to, for us to start talking about charging the person, especially when it's on vacation like this and when we have to bring people back on campus to find this information. I, this to me is.
No, I didn't get that information. So nobody can't come back and get it because I didn't get it. So how could you have somebody charge somebody for coming back and getting it? I haven't gotten it yet.
On the Aspire Award?
I, I got it.
Emailed you back.
I got the email back from Dr. Kroll.
Yeah, I emailed everybody back.
I think the point is why would you, why would you, knowing the college is closed, why would you send a request on December 30th? When you know the college is closed before holiday? What, what was the?
I'll try to be more attentive to that. I was not thinking.
Sarcastic about it.
I'm not being sarcastic. I am just stating, I'll try to be more careful and keep in mind when the college is closed. Because it was my intent to just get it out of my hair and write it and then not worry about it till the college came back. But hey, I could be more cautious.
But a core request is not for something like this.
Mary Martha, a core request is for any information that I would need. In my case, I went for the first year without getting very much information.
We're not going to go back there. I'm just saying that for who nominated Butler for the VISO Aspire Award. To me, that, that, I don't know why you had to have that information immediately and especially with the core request.
Okay, well, I wanted to know who nominated us. But I didn't get any paperwork per se. I just got, I know that I got an email response, but.
There wasn't any paperwork to go along with.
There wasn't.
Didn't get a nomination or anything like that.
But why was that so important to you to file a core request?
I just wanted to know if we self nominated or if other colleges nominated or if somebody from the Co. Manufacturing Company nominated us. I mean, there's been several institutions that have gotten this award. So I just wanted to know why we, how we came about it. Was it intended to irritate anyone or make a problem? Just wanted to know how we came by it. I think it's a great thing and I stated that in my email. I just wanted to know how we ended up with it. I saw the long list of those who had already received it.
Yeah. So that award is actually given by VISO. They recognize institutions that are doing outstanding work across the country that are, that are using VISO. So they, they, they recognize the great work that our faculty and staff are doing in terms of, of student retention and.
So someone from a visa.
That is correct.
Nominated us.
I don't know if we're nominated, but they recognized us at a VISO. And then that's how we ended up with, with that award.
I'm just going to reiterate, I'm irritated. And I think we all need to start thinking about payment because I don't like having people come back and work past or on their vacation time for information like this. If it was immediate, if it was very pertinent to the college, yes.
To come back and work. Did anybody else have to go back?
She had to respond.
She had to respond to you.
And I also, I called or emailed Troy and Phil both because I didn't know the answer to it. So they, you know, they responded to me by email.
This strikes me.
I was here working anyway.
Just wanted to know.
This strikes me as the sort of information that could have been handled with a simple email to Dr. Kroll. There's not underlying documents that you're asking for. There's not open records to be needed. It's, I, I don't, I don't challenge that you would like to know the answer. This didn't require a core request. A simple email directly to Dr. Kroll.
I think it's great if other board members can get information and not require a core request.
As, as Mary Martha said, we're not going back down that road. That you've been, you've been harping that for over a year. At some point that dies. Unless you want to keep it alive.
No, I've just had a number every one of them because I, they get lost or they get delayed.
You are keeping that issue alive with this continued core stuff. And for issues like this that have absolutely no business being involved in core.
Enforced, honestly, all respect due, really. I don't think you have any business telling a trustee what they can and can't have. I will apologize for not thinking about it being during vacation.
Again, you misstated what I've said. This isn't about whether you had a right to the information. I'm not challenging that you had a right.
This is about writing any core.
Let me finish. The issue is this didn't have to go through core. You could have answered the question you wanted with a simple email to Dr. Kroll without having to deal with core. That's, that's my point.
And my point is, I don't agree with you. Do we want to go over the next one? Because it's not complete. It's, I'm missing some stuff, but.
What do you mean the next one?
Well, I am very concerned because at several meetings this year, I have heard that HLC is very concerned and da, da, da. Oh my gosh, we're going to get a losing our accreditation. And I've been all up and down their policy, which is quite a lengthy document as far as reaccreditation.
Julie, do you mind if, let's hold that. We've got a board governance discussion on the agenda.
Okay, we can hold that if we're finished talking. I'm just trying to address this core.
Is there something in the documents that you think is inaccurate for what your request was? Let's hold off on.
I don't have those. I don't have any of this yet.
That's not one. Do you have, do you have any other problems with the information?
As long as we can discuss this during that session that you're talking about.
Yes. Okay.
Then I'm good to do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions on Dr. Kroll's report?
Maybe in the future, if you guys want to discuss it for the meeting, put this in the board book. So I'm going to put that up higher. At the start of the meeting and we don't really know. I haven't even read it.
I was under the impression when, I was under the impression when these were asked for, they were asked for just so that they could, so that other trustees would know what had been requested. When there's something that comes through as a core request and we share information, we share it with all the trustees. I would certainly defer to the board if you want this to be a regular agenda item for discussion each month.
Would you put it on there? Put it on there last month? I don't care if it's there or not.
Well, the KACC recommended this to all colleges. And that's when we started asking for the core report.
Find it on anyplace else. You'll show me a college that has this. I mean, I, I think this is great. But again, I would like for Kent to include the emails. So that there be no mistake about how the word was written.
I was under the impression that you just wanted, wanted the, the document in front of you. I, you know, if you want a discussion item each month, then we can add it to the.
I don't think we need a discussion.
We don't like how they presented it. Or at our whim.
I think it's.
I would like this information prior so I can be, that's all I want to say.
Well, I need to know before.
Appreciate what she did, but I didn't have this till the start of the meeting. Meeting has been going all the time. I haven't completed other stuff very. So it'd be more professional if we had it prior. It'd all be on the same page.
That's fine with me. I just want it up to date. Okay, let's do it in the board book, please.
I need to know for month to month, if you want all of this in, in the board book as a public document, posted on the website and distributed to everybody. Because that's what, that's where it'll be. It becomes a public.
Great. I mean, a core request is a public document as well. I mean, I'm going to, Dr. Kroll's contract is coming up. We as a board should be required to approve or disapprove. I would like to see that contract prior. I'm going to request it.
We're talking about core requests right now.
Probably do a core request unless I don't need to. So we could be, know what's being approved.
Wendy, you decide to do a core request, Shelby?
We're going to have a core discussion now.
No, no, I'm just asking.
But I think it's public information. Having to do with finance or money.
Okay. But I mean, did you ask for it already? Her contract, I see.
I'm just saying there probably will be one in another month or so.
Let's move along here on our agenda. Educational facilities report.
They have it.
Okay, that's easy. Then no monitoring reports for this meeting. So strategic discussion. The Butler Cali Nurse Partnership.
Okay, so I've been tasked to give an update to the board about the progress with the really wonderful opportunity we have to partner with Cali Community College to increase our number of seats that we can offer for our nursing students. So basically the history behind this, a few years, well, a little while ago, there was a partnership between Cali College and Pratt Community College that kind of dissolved for, for numerous reasons. So Cali and reached out to Butler to discuss the potential of us partnering with them to offer seats, 16 associate degrees nursing seats at the Wind Field Allied Health Campus location. And we are currently been approved at state level to, to make this move. We're waiting approval from ACN, which is the Accreditation Commission for Education and Nursing. We should be hearing the next, by next, by the end of February, if we have the green light from them. And then we can proceed to go forward with this initiative, which again, is a partnership, a great partnership between two community colleges here and, and a way for us to serve the needs. Obviously, we have a huge need right now for nurses and this is an opportunity for us to expand that, that landscape. This is something that they're excited about. They're very excited about. And I think we share that same excitement. And for us to, to, to make this happen on our campus with expanded spaces and things like that is just not feasible. So this is a great opportunity for us and, and again, to enter this partnership. And I don't know what other questions you may have at this time, but we can definitely try to field those to the best of our ability.
My other question would be the, the cost of programmers at the end.
Yeah, well, we looked at that. Obviously, you know, by the time we fill 16 seats, we're still going to be revenue positive at that point.
This also go along with the approve and provide.
Yeah. So you gotta, you gotta remember, we'll start with a class of eight. So in the fall, the goal, our, our, our plan is to start with a class of eight students. Those will matriculate into the spring. We only do in fall starts. So then, then fall, then of 2024, we would have 16 students in that cohort at once. So then we would only be maxed out at 16 students. That's what we're seeking approval with the state and with Aston to, to offer 16 extra seats there.
So the fall of 2024.
We would be at our capacity. Yes. Yeah. You have to give it some time to, yeah, to happen. I mean, obviously our first year, we won't be at full capacity at that point. So, you know, looking at probably in about three years from now, after we start this, this relationship and this partnership, we would have some, some more solid data at that point.
Yes.
I had a quick question. I was just wondering, are we going to hire local teachers down there, or do we have somebody that's gonna travel? How are we going to handle that?
Yeah, we'll be, most of the instruction is actually gonna be delivered through our Poly Studio, our High Flex delivery. Correct me if I'm wrong, Julio. So we will be providing some support there on site. There would be Butler employees, but they would be working at the site to facilitate instruction that's happening there.
So there's no instructors that have to go down there and oversee?
Yeah, there'll be faculty. Will there not be faculty that, that are?
Faculty will be here.
Yeah.
The faculty will be here. They'll be in a classroom watching the classroom, the instruction view on a, like a high flex.
Yeah.
Format.
So how many people will be down there located?
We're looking at, I believe, two site coordinators and a, and a part-time administrative support. Which again, would align with our accreditation needs.
Any other questions for Dr. Kroll? Moving on to board governance discussion.
Um, yeah, you, you go ahead.
Just kind of dovetails a little bit. Or I'll try not to to be too long-winded for the new board members. We there was a discussion that Lance shared last week from a phone call, excuse me, last month at our December meeting from a phone call that he and I had with Dr. Kroll and Dr. Sperry and Tom Borden Kircher, who has been our, our representative.
He's our HLC liaison.
So he, he's the person we go to for, for Higher Learning Commission questions and issues. And he expressed concern over how some board governance issues have been occurring over the last couple of years with respect to, I will try to detail all those. But a lot of it is we have board policies that the board has approved. And we have many, many instances of trustees not following the policy. Whether it's because they don't like it, they didn't vote for it. I'm not sure exactly why, but there's been a general unwillingness to follow these policies. And the message from, from Tom Borden Kircher was that needs to get fixed or it's going to become a bigger problem when HLC is here next year for their periodic review. In, in follow-up to that, so there, there's no question as to the, the four, not the Newport members, but the rest of us, those issues were, were plain as day discussed last December. And then, not a couple of weeks after that meeting, we have a trustee that goes outside of any chain within the board directly to not even an employee of the college, but to our outside accounting firm, asking for information without notifying Dr. Kroll, without notifying anybody. Those kinds of things cannot continue. They can't. There's, there's no, there is no authorized basis for an individual trustee to be reaching out to people outside the college with questions like that. If we have a question, our avenue is through Dr. Kroll. And if we're unhappy with how the answer is, we're unhappy with that response, that's a separate issue. But the first step has to be going through Dr. Kroll. And if we don't, Julie, this was you. If we don't get this figured out.
I was not the first one to say that.
You were the one that I'm, the example that I'm talking about. You were the one that contacted BKD directly without going through anybody with the college.
Did you forget about anybody else on this board that did that, or you just conveniently forgot?
Yours is the most recent.
Okay, thank you.
Because it just happened in the month since we talked.
Right, and since it did get talked about the last meeting, I was so nice about including everyone I could think of in my request.
You didn't include anyone in your request until you contacted BKD and he told you that he wasn't going to respond without you going through the college. And then you sent an email. Then you, you did not send the email. You had already reached out to BKD.
That's right.
Said the email.
That's right.
Don't say that you reached out to everybody.
Hey, I reached out to him and he told me how he would like for me to make sure that it went through Dr. Kroll. And so guess what? I said, you know what? We'll just end it here. I will send him an email today. And that's what I did.
It isn't BKD's decision. You're a member of the board. Your obligation is to follow the board policies. Just because BKD says it's okay to contact us, which by the way, they didn't. But even if they did, that doesn't change what our obligations are as a board. We go through Dr. Kroll.
As a side note, during the sale of the building, the ninety-one hundred building, I ran across some doctors who were looking for a facility and handover. Said, hey, I'm working at John Rupp's house. Here's his contact information. I gave him that contact, someone that might. But I, I just happened to meet somebody that he'd been looking for a building. It's like, well, I'm actually working at Rupp's house. Here's his cell phone. He called me the next morning. Okay, has a guy contacted you yet? That was me just trying to get bids on the building. I'm not interested if you guys know about that, but it's just.
I did. That doesn't strike me as the same, as the same situation, but I appreciate you sharing.
But yeah.
So I want to make a couple more questions. In other organizations, you know, there's a, a way to do things. It's set out. You don't go around somebody at all. And so it's my understanding that as trustees, we're tasked with making policy. We're tasked with managing the budget. And number three, we have the responsibility to hire a president for the college. And to, I will, in the future, will resent, and I have a question just on even this request for information, where the comment that says she will also be contacting HLC to know exactly what approved board policies and HLRC criterion. Well, she should be asking Dr. Kroll. We look at the last board meeting that I attended when, when that was discussed by Chairman Lectenberg and they talked about that. I mean, honestly, I've been hearing for months that we actually have our accreditation at risk. Whether that's true or not, I don't know, but I'm certainly not wanting to be a part of the Board of Trustees. If we're gonna do things in the closet by ourselves and then come to the meeting and say, well, guess what? I checked and this is what happened. If we're not getting accurate information, then we have a way to handle that. But I don't feel comfortable, and I mean, I'll call people out every time I see incidents where I think that we are violating our policies. And obviously, I don't know all the policies for sure yet. And I would love to go out and talk to instructors and things like that. But I understand the jeopardy that that puts us in. I have those conversations. You don't know what I said. And do you want me representing you by myself? I don't want anybody else representing me by themselves. I want it to be here at the table. Same thing would happen with the planning and zoning board. People are not allowed to talk to them about that case prior to the actual planning and zoning meeting. It has to be presented in front of everybody. And that's why I think that we need to be following our policies. And then as a board of trustees, we ought to have the ability to collaborate as a group instead of being upset because somebody's out there doing something on their own. And I could be just as guilty of making that mistake, but I'm going to try very hard not to. And I'm a white baby. I want to know why everything is like it is, so.
Part of the reason why we're at this point, my two cents, is when Julie and I came on the board. I was, I was stoned. I got a five hundred. Doctor Tom Borden Kircher about this at a live meeting. And I told him that very fact, like, am I not, am I not entitled to the information? Dr. Kroll said she will not provide it without a story. He said on video, you are entitled to the information. And she can give you the story. And if you want to look under every rock, you got every right to do that. So there was a total amount of information provided to us. That information is provided legally. Sabotage.
And I know some, we wanted to have some discussion about cora. The, the concern that I wanted to, to emphasize is, is not the core. Core issue is, is I think part of this because it goes to how the cohesiveness or lack thereof of the board and the, the lack of respect that is shown by some towards administration. The concern that I have is, is we can't be individually going out and doing things. We, we act, we operate as a whole, seven people that represent one corporate body, which is the board. And when we are individually going out and doing things on our own, that's going to cause problems. We are on HLC's radar right now. That they are aware of it. Tom Borden Kircher's comment was, you probably can't come to me anymore because based on what I know now, we're in a regulatory, in a regulatory role and not a collegial. So we've passed the point of saying, hey, can you help us with this? We gotta figure this out on our own, or we are at risk of having accreditation issues next year.
We need to define accreditation issues.
Phil is on.
Yeah.
Phil can chime in and help with, from his perspective.
To, they say when, when trustees are threatened with HLC generally, that's not a real threat.
Phil, you want to provide some insight into that in your experience as a peer reviewer and as a team chair, please?
Well, it's unusual that boards become a major issue in terms of accreditation. But in my conversations with what I've observed and what's in video and what's in board minutes for interactions in the past couple of years, this could easily get into that area of what you're talking about tonight in terms of criterion two, which is ethical and responsible conduct. It says the institution establishes and follows policies and processes to ensure fair and ethical behavior on the part of its governing board and then administration, faculty and staff. So if the board establishes policies and procedures and then flagrantly ignores them and circumvents them and, and the board membership does not address that and call it into question, that would be a very serious concern on the part of a evaluating team in twenty twenty-three.
Right, that's precisely my point. We're being asked, especially last year, the, the four as publicly elected individuals to represent the taxpayers because the college is a taxpayer-funded institution. They let be taxes on sixty-five thousand citizens of Butler County. They get to decide whether we can have renovations on our properties with the tax abatement. We can't allow the administration to put requirements upon us. Like if we were signing this thing tonight and it said, this is a ridiculous statement, that every board member will learn to juggle and ride a unicycle. And we all sign off on it, and then HLC comes and only one of us can juggle and ride it. We're in violation of our policy. That doesn't have anything to do with what we as trustees do. You can't mandate my speech that I have to support whatever the majority supports. If, if the majority increases the taxes on the taxpayers, I will not support that publicly or privately. And you can't mandate my speech. That's not legal, and I will not sign that form. That's what I'm coming back to. It's just you can't say we have this policy. You have to do it no matter what because you got elected as trustee. Now you follow our policies. I didn't run on your policies. I didn't. These are not laws that I have to follow. The requirements of a trustee is to be eighteen years old and a citizen of the county that you're elected in. This is not legally binding stuff that governs my freedom of speech because it's our policy. And there was.
Not mistake eligibility to be a board member with obligations of a board member. What you just stated is the eligibility criteria to run for election. That is not the same as.
Right, but you can't, you can't mandate my speech.
Well, here was my concern when I heard it. And, and I was just sitting in the audience. Being a part of education and going through cycles where you have a team of people who come in, I will tell you that they look at every entity. They look at us as trustees. They'll look at the college. They'll even go back and contact former students. They do a thorough, thorough research, and that is all part of accreditation. I also, I mean, there are times where I'm like Linda, you know, it, I'll ask why. But I also know that I'm one-seventh of all of us. And all seven of us make a whole. And I don't want to do anything to jeopardize somebody else coming in and saying, you know something? You guys aren't living up to the policies or the, the rules that you guys set. And then they take control. And they can take control, and I don't want to lose control. I want to be a part of the trustees that we make our decision. But if we make a decision, I don't agree with the decision, but the decision passes, it is up to me to follow that decision. I don't have a choice of disagreeing. I may have disagreed with the vote. But once the, once the majority votes, I'm all in favor.
Not my personality.
Well, now that everybody else has talked without interruption, I shall begin.
Talk into your microphone.
I really, really have deep concerns about the accreditation myself. And to be honest, I've been totally reading over and over and over that gigantic policy book that they have online with the HLC. And it goes through there and it talks about how you become accredited. It talks about your, your reevaluations and all these things that I think are very important. But having said that, to be constantly, you know, about everything that you do threatening with this accreditation. I've looked at the, at their website. I've looked at, at those that have been sanctioned and so forth. I mean, although I'm concerned about our policies, perhaps we've made some policies that are absolutely impossible to follow as elected officials because my, I, I swore allegiance to the Constitution, not, not to the policies that the board sets. Now, that being said, I am more concerned as a board member, after reading all of that, that we have taken what we've done in the past, learned from it, and built new policies. And my first example is going to be the million-dollar lawsuit. My second example is going to be others that have settled out of courts, court.
Julie, these are executive session, potentially discussions. Be careful what you're talking about.
I am being very careful. I'm not naming names. I'm just saying I am very concerned. All of that has happened in the last, say, eight or nine years. I am, this is all public information.
What does this have to do with board governance? We're talking about board acting.
You know what, Forrest? I let everybody sit here and do all kinds of things that I disagreed with, and I didn't interrupt them, and I expect the same from you. I'm just asking.
I am asking what this has to do with the topic at hand.
It has everything to do with it. I cannot, we cannot talk about HLC without me talking about this. I am more concerned about the Title IX, quote-unquote, sexual content investigation that is absolutely public and online with the Kansas Department of Education. I'm, I'm more concerned about the entire year's forfeiture, the BCC fund vault deed. You know, these are the things.
This is not board governance.
It is.
No, it is not.
It is.
Governance is how your board governs itself. You are talking about issues that relate to the college.
Going to talk about the HLC, you must absolutely sit down and line out all of the policies that you believe that your fellow board members that you don't agree with are not complying with.
The agenda item is board governance. You may talk about.
It's okay, as long as it's somebody else that's talking, right? Okay, well, I'm. Okay. Well, I'm talking about board governance.
And no, right now you're not. You have not said anything yet about board governance.
What do you want me to say? You want me to say that this is a great agreement? Because anything that you give me, I guarantee I've already talked to an attorney about and I will not sign that either.
I want, the floor is open for discussion on the topic of board governance. And if you have
I wish, okay, let me make this comment then. I would be so honored if every administrator in this entire college would sign this instead. Because I see the problems from the other way, not from the board.
I would just ask for something in writing that says exactly what these violations are or could possibly be, what the repercussions are from HLC. You can't tell me that you could elect one or two trustees, they show up at the college, they mouth off, and HLC smacks down their accreditation and that college is unaccredited. I mean, that, it doesn't seem possible to me. I want to see this legally in writing. What the violations are, what the constitution, what the consequences are. Because what I've been told so far are vagaries and idle threats. That doesn't show me exactly what the consequences are. It's just, this could be this, if you don't do this, so we better be careful because we don't know.
Well, I'm going to ask
Did not give any specifics.
I'm going to ask Phil to offer a little bit of comment again because a lot of this depends upon the site team that comes in because they're following the criterion that are in place. They're reviewing our board policies. So a lot of what happens depends upon the site team that actually comes in to do the review. Phil, do you want to just kind of briefly walk through those steps? Because, you know, we, we, we can't, we can't necessarily say we don't know what that site team is going to say or what they're going to do, but we do, we do have the ability to say ahead of time. These are concerns and things that they're going to be looking at and they're going to know about it before they get here. And we need to make sure that they aren't big enough problems when they get here that we're in trouble with the Higher Learning Commission. So I would
My question is to show me HLC policy, violations, consequences, black and white and writing.
Well, we'll show, yeah, we'll show, I've already given you that. I've given you the criterion and Phil stated it's an overarching criterion. And so the
Didn't state any specifics or
The site team that comes in understands though, in their training, that they're looking for examples of unethical behavior. They're looking at examples of violations of board policies. And so the way that those peer evaluators and the team chair are trained, they look at that overarching criterion and the sub criterion and they look at examples to see whether you're following those or whether you're not. And so it depends upon the institution and depends upon the specific circumstances. And so, you know, we can, we can go down the list and we can say, these are the things right now that are of concern from Phil's perspective. We can, we can ask some other people. These are the things that have happened that are of great concern. We can put that list together if you
Not my question. My question is there, my statement is there are policies I will not agree with and I will not follow, that you're trying to have me follow. Show me HLC. Show me where they've taken action before. Show me there are repercussions of someone speaking their mind or violating some board policy that they disagree with. Show me the repercussions that have happened in writing. Don't just tell me what could possibly happen if I don't do what you'd like me to do.
So Phil, do you understand what he's asking for?
Give me a black and white.
Well, I think that what Shelby, what you're talking about is rather a different issue than what's my main concern with the criteria. You not agreeing with what other board members say and speaking your mind in terms of your opposition to how the college moves forward because there's a policy you don't agree with. That's probably would be considered public discourse. But if there is a policy which then you choose to ignore and go around it and circumvent it, which may have happened from my understanding and listening to what's been going on the past several months, then that's an ethical, that is unethical behavior as far as the criteria is concerned.
I would ask that you provide me this information, black and white from HLC. And I would also reiterate, I am not an employee of Dr. Kroll or this administration. None of the trustees are. We've got this really
Well, that's, that's the, you got the code of ethics, I think.
We can certainly, we can get more information and I think
I just, I'm just, I'm tired of being threatened without an actual black and white threat. The verbiage last month was very specifically not specific to define what the consequences were. It was very specifically stated. There's not any real consequence except for they're going to be disappointed that
We could give you a list of the consequences that happen to institutions that are in these situations.
That's what he asked for.
We wanted to know what the consequences are.
Or member that has spoken their mind and made a phone call. Like for instance, BKD, we'd asked for months and months to get, you know, all this data software that the budget for it was a hundred thousand dollars. We chose to do 40,000 of it and not do the other two items. There were 10,800 dollars. I made a phone call just because I wasn't presented the information that I've asked for. It's like, hey, what's the cost of these other two policies? Is this exorbitant? Is this why we're not doing it? It's very reasonable. It's some more work, but we would actually know what each site generates or loses. We would know football across country, what every sport generates or loses. It'd be more great data for us. I have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers to look into that and make a phone call.
You have a fiduciary responsibility to follow our policies, which means you could have got that information by asking
Forrest, I disagree.
If your policy said, she'll be Meredith has no right to do blah, blah, blah. I get elected. I'm not under your policy.
We are, as an elected trustee, we are under the policies of the college. The policies that we adopt or the board is adopted, of course.
Contrary to what everybody in this room probably thinks, I do not have an agenda coming in here. I'm as blind as blind can be because I didn't even really absorb campaigning because of the loss of my head. Okay. I have not, I've only come to one meeting and that was in the midst of all of that. I have not had, I had coffee with Dr. Cole. I've not had extensive conversations about any of this. This is just me listening to what's going on here. And if there's a threat to loss of accreditation from the outside looking in, it doesn't seem to me like it, it ought to be a board and administration issue slash question. If they're saying, hey, I requested information and I didn't get it, to your point, they should request the information through Dr. Cole. If they did and didn't get it, then that's a problem. But it's a problem for the administration as much as the board. And, and I feel like no matter what side of the fence you're on on this, all of it ought to be pretty well, pretty easy to figure out. If information is requested and not received, they go around, yeah, that's not the right way to do things because that's not the policy. But if they're not provided information and I don't know, I have no idea who's asked for what, what's been provided or anything else. It doesn't warrant a 20 or 30 minute back and forth discussion because I feel like what Shelby's talking about is a different conversation than what you're talking about. And absolutely policies and procedures should be followed when possible. But if board members don't feel like they're being listened to and they go a different way, then that's got to be addressed too. And I don't know, I just, like I said, outside listening or just listening to this in the last 20, 30 minutes. I feel like all of it could be figured out pretty quickly with some, some deep dive and that. I don't know. I hope that makes sense, but
This would be a good work session.
Yeah.
Segues in just perfectly.
I just have one more thing. One of the things in, to address what Shelby's requesting as far as details. I'm thinking, why not find an expert and get him in here and do a mock audit? I think that's a terrific idea. I don't care if it costs money. The point is if our accreditation is so at stake, we need to hear from an outside individual that could come in and audit our procedures and policies, which is basically what HLC does. And tell us where we're in violation. Why do we have to wait until it's our turn? It's only in every 10 year thing. I don't want to be like Kansas City, Kansas or Kansas City, Missouri, whatever, wherever that college is up there. They're in sanction right now. I, I don't want to be like that. I want to know if there are big problems here. And I don't see that. I don't see the problems and I won't see them until we do an mock audit. So if it's that big a concern, we didn't spend the money on the software identifying cost. So maybe we can spend some of the COVID money on a mock audit. I think that's a great idea.
I don't, it's, I don't know what you mean by a mock audit. There's no
Here and pretend they're the HLC and go through all of our policies and go verbatim by the policy book that they use for reaccreditation. When they do their audits. Why are you shaking your head?
I don't do that.
Oh, we've got people that I've already identified that can come in and do that. I'm just waiting for them to get back with me.
That's
Who have you contacted? Who have you contacted?
The same people that I wrote you the email about that you didn't include of HLC, asking them if they knew something.
Did you talk to somebody?
Not HLC. I'm talking, I'm sorry, the BKD people to ask them if they knew anybody that could come in and do that.
They don't do HLC audits.
I understand that, but they are still looking at this point in time for someone who does so that they can help us out by doing such a thing. Would the board entertain such an idea?
We have experts in our midst that can tell us the concerns that we're going to face. I think the upshot is you don't believe them.
So Forrest, I think we just need a professional is all, somebody that's outside.
Dr. Spirit does this. Dr. Spirit
Yes.
Yeah.
All of the United States.
Well, no, excuse me. I'm a member with a second term appointment of the Institutional Action Council or HLC, which is the top body that makes final decisions on accreditation questions. So, so, you know, uh, I'm trying to tell you what I would tell another institution. I, when I am talking to you, I'm really talking as a peer evaluator and a member of the Institutional Action Council. If I wasn't in that position, I probably wouldn't have the concerns that I have. I mean, I have someone I could, could suggest to Dr. Kroll who could come in and talk with you all and look at the situation and tell you what their take on the situation is. But I think that they would have very, well, I know they'd have the same reaction. Uh, so, but you know, you could bring it, you could pay someone to come in. And because it's my understanding, Julie, that what you want is you want an examination by an experienced HLC evaluator of this specific criterion, right?
Of the criteria that they're going to go in and evaluate us on.
Right, okay.
All the criteria, whether it's board member conversations, emails, I mean, all kinds of, like you said, they look at everything. I spent 30 years as a site auditor. I know exactly what you're talking about. I didn't do anything but financials, but believe me, I have studied the rules. So if you got somebody that could do that from the outside, I would prefer not a college paid employee that works here. Yes. I would prefer someone that on the outside is revered in the community of colleges, that someone that could come in and prepare them for an audit. It's such a skill. You know, I think that's a great idea, but if you guys
This segues into, this segues into the training that we need to do, that Tom Bordenkurtcher insisted that we get started on to address this. Sue Givens is coming on January 24th to the work session. She's doing some training right now for Association of School Boards and Community Colleges on Board Responsibilities and Boardsmanship. She's going to come in and talk to us. I also have some contacts with ACCT. As Tom indicated and as, as Forrest shared, Tom's statement to us was, I can't come in and help you because I'm now in a regulatory role. I'm not in a collegial necessary role. So I have contacts with ACCT. Uh, and I will visit with Phil. We've got, uh, we've got between the two of us enough of a network that will bring in some folks this spring to discuss and help us understand as a board where the concerns are and what we need to do to get them solved. Uh, and, and we'll get that on our schedules and we'll get moving on it. So gives us a perfect opportunity to bring in some outside resources, some outside expertise, because that's what you want. And so we'll get it done. I'll let you know when we get them, uh, get them lined up and, and
Yeah, as long as they follow that criteria that the policy book for the HLC specific.
They're well aware of that criteria. That, I would ask them, I would ask them to come in, ACCT people to come in and help us with those. Um, I know Phil, when Maricopa has had problems and people have had issues like that, they'll bring in people from ACCT to help them. So they're, they're well aware of their accreditation.
Neo shows wants to run right now. Maybe it would be beneficial if we had a visit with them.
Neo shows going through a what?
An HLC audit? At least according to the HLC posting.
Brian Inbody hasn't indicated that.
Yeah. And, and incidentally, Julie, they're called comprehensive evaluations.
They're not audits.
Right.
Evaluate. Just a regular site visit.
Just to avoid confusion.
It's not because they're in trouble. It's just their regular visit.
Yeah. And they, they, and, and they also, they happen in the fourth year and the 10th year also, incidentally.
And on the same topic, Dr. Gordon Kirchner supposedly said, me disagreeing with our legal counsel in public was a violation of blah, blah, blah. But there was a thing that Ray sent out to a nursing student that I found unconscionable. We were going to treat nurses differently, what the same, same program, same nurses could be roommates would be treated differently, whether or not they were or were not vaccinated. I took issue with that and, and raised my concerns. That's me disagreeing with counsel, but I felt I must. So if something like that comes up, I will speak my mind.
We've had a lively discussion about this. I look forward to the, the training opportunities that we'll have at our, at our work sessions. So let's move on to board action items. The first one is the affirmation of service and standards of practice.
This was, um, you know, something that came out of the KACC team meeting in Pratt in December. The, um, trustee group recommended this as a best practice to be implemented at the community colleges in January as, you know, new trustees came on or they, you know, if they didn't have new trustees, if they were, you know, realigning board officers and things like that. I've included a copy of the affirmation of service and standards of practice. It's really based on ACCT's code of ethics and then, so, you know, they encouraged us to have our board members state this together. Uh, I have a document that I stuck over in front of Mary Martha, a little bit, it's on a little bit thicker paper, but, um, you know, would encourage you to speak this together and then we'll pass that around and have you sign it and we'll frame it and put it on the wall in the boardroom here.
Before we get going, I will absolutely not say this or assign this, period.
I will not say it or sign it either.
Well, that's your choice. It'll be publicly recorded and you don't, you don't have
Sure it will, Kim.
Well, let's be civil here.
I'm being civil.
There's stuff in this I disagree with.
Julie, what, what about this? What, what bullet point about this do you have a problem agreeing to?
Well, it's not that in general that they're not nice statements.
You're refusing to sign it. What, what about this?
I don't, I don't think I need to have any allegiance except with what I was sworn in for. My allegiance is to the Constitution of the United States and to the voters that elected me and nothing else.
What about this?
I just said, that's
The United States.
I just said, that's the only, that's why I won't sign it. It doesn't have that on here. I don't, I don't sign it. No.
I would explain my
I want to hear.
You would sign it? That's all
I, I've read, I've told you at the beginning of this conversation that I consulted an attorney, which is too bad that I have to do, but I have. And he said, no, do not sign it. So I'm not going to.
Want to understand what about this you have a problem with?
Well, I think the biggest problem I have with it is that the way I see it from this chair, the administration needs to sign that. Because I, I, I feel like as a board member, all I want to do is have transparency and truth.
You didn't answer my question.
I just did.
What, what about this? The administration has separate issue. The employees of the college are governed by separate rules and if they don't abide by requirements, they lose their job. What, what part about this do you have a problem with as a trustee?
All of it. I'd have to go any further than that.
So you don't think that we should exemplify ethical
Forrest, it's not that. I just stated it. I don't know any
Julie, I would explain what I
Please go ahead, Shelby.
I mean. We're charged with serving the people who elected us, not to come here and sign a document that controls us. I'll, I'll go through my qualms. Uh, I would like it to be defined, my authority only exists in acting collectively, which voting, yes. With the interest, I'm obliged to serve the interests of our entire community, defined community.
Can, can mean lots of different things. It can mean the internal community, it can mean the community.
That the citizens of Butler County or as a service.
Internally, community, age, permission, we talk about that community lots of different. It can mean the community people that you work with. It can be, it can be El Dorado, it can be Butler County, it can be internal community of employees and administrators. It can be the community of just the board members. It, it's a broad based.
It's broad and then you say entire, so it's encompassing.
Yeah, everybody.
Does that include outside of our Butler County people?
Potentially it could, because we have partnerships with business and industry that are outside of Butler County. We have partnerships with institutions. That exist outside of Butler County. We have, we, we have all kinds of examples of those things that happened outside of just Butler County centric.
Okay, says I will engage in ongoing process of in-service education and continuous improvement. I'm happy to do that, but that's not a requirement of me being a trustee.
It, I think in your, in your board policy, it does say that you are obligated to do um, continuing education and professional. You have a professional development policy that you.
That's my personal opinion. It also says I will be prepared to participate in open, honest and civil. What if somebody doesn't read their book and they choose not to? I mean, I, I read it cover to cover. It says I'll vote my conscience rather than advance any special interests. You need to find a special interest. I can't, I can't advance the taxpayer's interest because that might be special. We will speak with one voice once a decision or policy is made. I refuse to do that. I will not do that. You cannot mandate my speech. I will honor the division of responsibility between the board, the president and staff, contribute to creating a spirit of true cooperation. That's not defined. If I feel the administration and staff are doing something wrong. And they, we have that division of labor and if I need to step outside of that, I will do it if I choose, if I think I need to. So these are the items I disagree with and I won't sign it.
Thank you, Shelby.
I mean, I will engage in, I will exemplify ethical behavior. I'll do this job and best my ability, but I'm not going to be governed. By whatever policy that people put into place to try to control what I do.
I think we.
It's not a vote, but I would.
It is a total vote, yeah.
HLC and then you guys sign this and we'll put it on the wall. And if you don't do it, you're in violation of. This would have been better in a work session instead of trying to.
We've had these discussions. This available for, if you don't want to sign it.
And some group of people that got together and thought this is a great idea, kumbaya, we'll all sign this. They can't make me do it.
You don't have to sign it. All I'm saying is that it's been a practice for a long time at this college to reaffirm. The, the code of ethics of ACCT and the standards of practice. This is something that we've done. This, this was encouraged by KACC as a whole, not as an individual institution. That's fine. If you don't want to speak to it, that's fine. Maybe some of the other board members do. Um, I, I guess I think that it's a pretty appropriate practice and sort of shows your goodwill and wanting to serve as a trustee to this college. And move the mission forward, so.
I just don't agree with it as well.
Well, that's fine. You don't have.
I was wondering the KACC think, you know, I, 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 I think this is great and that, you know, you set it around table and you decided to do this. And then sold it to all the other colleges and they're going to do it. I think it's great, but it's not for me. It's just not for me. And I, I guess I would like to see things handled so differently to where you didn't even have to have this. And, you know, I, I'd like to see, does any of this code of conduct responsibility policy, excuse me? Do you want me to? Uh, does any of this code of conduct, does this reflect anything that's in the Butler County uh code of ethics that they put out a few years back? Butler County put out a countywide politician, political ethics thing about uh conflict of interest and code of conduct and things like that. I just wondered if it reflects anything in that. I, I hate to have the college redesign the wheel every time we turn around, but.
For the, for the benefit of, for the benefit of those that, that haven't seen the document, I'm going to read what it says. It's the board of, it's titled Board of Trustees, Affirmation of Service and Standards of Good Practice. And the statement is, it is with the deepest sense of responsibility and conviction as a trustee of Butler Community College that I solemnly affirm. That I understand my authority exists only when acting collectively with my fellow board members. That our authority is derived from and obliged to serve the interests of our entire community. That I will exemplify ethical behavior and conduct that is above reproach. That I will engage in an ongoing process of in-service education and continuous improvement. That I will be prepared to participate in open, honest and civil deliberations with my colleagues. Vote my conscience rather than advance any special interests, support the decisions and policy we make. And speak with one voice once a decision or policy is made. And the final one is that I will honor the division of responsibility between the board and the president and staff. And contribute to creating a spirit of true cooperation and mutually supportive relationship with the president and staff in support of our community.
Have we thought about having staff sign this as well?
Staff are not board trustees, so it wouldn't be.
No, we could change the title.
And those that have signed it are uh David Shear, Linda Jolly, Mary Martha Good and myself.
Since I, since I feel like the public statement of reading it and then making the implication that if we don't sign it, that we're somehow. You know, going against all these policies, I will just say publicly, the reason I'm not signing it is basically in regard to the speaking with one voice. And, and the implication that, that I would try to advance special interests, it's almost kind of that whole paragraph kind of a slap in the face. But I absolutely have no problem um exemplifying ethical behavior. I will engage in ongoing process of in-service education. All the things that, you know, would be expected of a board member in a professional manner. But that's our primary bullet point. That's the primary reason I'm not signing.
I'm so glad we're going to get some more uh in-service. I think that's been something that would have really improved the board cohesiveness.
Next uh action item is the AdAstra Academic Schedule and Resource Software, Dr. Neville.
All right, well, I hate to be uh the reason we have to shift this conversation, uh but. We are, we are requesting approval from the board to uh get support to purchase uh some scheduling software. Uh, this is a five-year commitment uh with AdAstra who is um, you know, they work with many schools across the country. They do specialize in um core scheduling. Uh, what this will do is help us um really look at how efficient we're offering our classes. We can build the uh what-if scenarios and um, right now, we currently do this uh in a paper process. And um, I think uh committing to some of this uh technology will be, help us be more efficient, uh use less uh. Uh, human resources to uh, to make these decisions. Uh, we can decrease our um margin of error, et cetera. So uh, we're just here to seek your approval to move forward with this purchase. Uh, this would be funded from the uh academics budget.
I move that we approve the purchase of the five-year contract with AdAstra as presented in the report.
We have a second.
Second? Yeah, I'd like to know more about this software. Have, you said other universities. What about community colleges?
Yeah, I mentioned other, other institutions. Yeah, uh, uh, colleges that I've worked at that have used that after I just, I just came from.
Colleges like in the area.
Uh, well, Austin Community College where I came from, we use this. Uh, I was like Guilford Tech Community College in North Carolina. Uh, AdAstra is actually located in Kansas City, uh so they are uh regional to us. Um, I don't know uh what other schools in Kansas use this software, uh but um, I could find out for you.
That's for five years.
Pardon me?
Four twenty-sixers for five years, right? That's the second.
No, we uh, we uh, I could not, I had to even fathom trying to ask for that kind of money for a core scheduling software.
Well, I thought Bill was in the room asking for that, frankly.
No, we're, we're asking for, it's a, it's fifteen thousand a year. Um, there is a five thousand dollar inflammation. And implementation fee where they will come and help us set up uh and, and get the software rolled out and then uh.
How do you plan on measuring it?
Uh, well, they're.
On the success.
Yeah, well, well, there's a few benchmarks we would look at. We'd look at our fill rate percentages. We would look at um, you know, the number of courses we offer. And we can also look at locations. So there's, there's multiple different types of uh assessments we can use to, to. That we don't currently have access.
Talk to any other programs that we have like Banner?
You know, that, all this information comes from Banner, yes.
Okay, great, great. I'll, I'll motion to approve that.
I already made the motion.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I beg your pardon. Did you get a second?
Yes.
Let's vote.
Any more discussion?
Nope.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly? Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Winslow?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
No.
Sorry, spaced out.
Did you say no?
No.
It passes six to one. Our next action item is a report on our audits from.
Actually, this, this item is just really an acknowledgement that uh we have received the audit report. Each one of you in, in front of you has a copy of the audit report and the management letter. Uh, you can look that over at your leisure. You know, uh, the. Michael Gerber, the partner who's in charge of our audit, he did come in and visit with the finance committee last month. Um, the audit um report is a clean report. There's no findings um detrimental to the college. And no uh issues of compliance in the management letter, but uh you can, you can look at all that. Uh, this is just sort of a tradition we have to vote to accept it. It's really just an acknowledgement that you've received your, your copy of that.
To accept it.
I will second.
Any, any discussion?
Well, a lot of, a lot of credit to a lot of people, but I would name just a couple. Uh, Kim Sherwood. Works directly with the auditors and her staff does a really good job. And Heather Ward in financial aid, that's a tremendous task with all the regulations that financial aid has. She and her staff do a wonderful job.
Well, congratulations. I've seen a lot of, lots of sessions.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Winslow?
Yep.
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Uh, moving on, we have the approval of Coach Brad's retirement.
I move that the board accept the retirement of Steve Brat with the gratitude of many former players, coaches. And the patrons of Butler football. He will be missed. That was not a part of the motion.
Steve's been here for forty-two years. Um, he was, he's been the coach of all six national championship teams. As a defensive line coach. Um, he is the face of Butler football and we will miss him greatly. He does not like fanfare. He does not like parties. He does not like any celebration that points a finger or a celebration towards Steve. For him, it's all about the kids. Um, you know, a couple of years ago, uh DeMarcus Lawrence was selected for the Pro Bowl. And he could have any coach in his football career come to the Pro Bowl as his guest and he's, and he chose Steve Brat. Um, Steve said he made the all elevator team because he just stayed at the elevator and rode up and down. So he can meet all of the, the NFL players that were there. So um, we're going to miss him. He, he uh. He, I would imagine he will still be around somewhere somehow. Uh, I know Jan, Jan Stid in the cafeteria is going to miss him too, because after their five fifty-five practices in the morning, Steve goes up and serves breakfast. Uh, with the, with the food service people, just, just to interact with the kids even more. So just a great person, a great leader, great coach and a great friend. We're going to miss him a lot. Well, he lives in Wichita. Um, what he does will probably be greatly dependent upon what Dana lets him do, so we'll go from there.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Winslow?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Okay, we have uh a couple of added action items. The first was approval of the memorandum of understanding. We all should have a copy of it.
Should have, should have written a motion for it and I didn't, but.
Entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between their administration and.
He just did, and I seconded.
Fantastic. Any, so we need discussion, but if you may have questions or would like to discuss.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Winslow?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Passes seven oh. Um, next item was also moved uh from the consent agenda, so in your board book, it was item. Eight D two, uh, the council grove site lease. Oh, other ring outs.
Yeah.
Would entertain a motion to approve the lease um as presented for the council grove site.
I will move just seconds soon as I find it. I move that the Board of Trustees ratified the lease agreement for Butler County, Council Grove location.
We have a second.
Second?
Okay, discussion.
Only reason for boldness, it's out of county, so I was thinking maybe in the future. If the city of Council Grove really appreciates us being there, perhaps they would vote to pay our lease for us or some, some such thing to help. Help us cover the burden of cost of being in a location out of county. So that's not on the table right now, but in twenty twenty-five, this, I'd like somebody to negotiate, hey, if we bring great value to your city. Please help us be there by helping us cut some costs. That's my only reason.
So just noting for people that may not be aware that while it's not in county, it is part of our designated service area by the Board of Regents. So that is why we're there. Um, we did have, uh, Dr. Neville and I went and met with the superintendent of the school. We met with the landlord. Um, this is actually a lower lease than what was originally presented to us. Uh, we've had conversations with the high school. Um, this is, you know, normally when we're doing a lot of dual credit, we're in the high school building. They have grown so much that there is not any room for us in their building. So we're right across the street. Those students actually walk over to us and take classes in that, in that facility. So um, there's potential down the road for, at the end of this first term of the lease. For the, the high school to have more conversation about how we can partner and share space. Um, but I just want you to know that we did have that conversation about sharing space, about how we could be more efficient. We also continue to utilize high flex modality, so connecting two classrooms via Zoom. So that we can be more efficient with our course offerings.
How large of a space is this?
Uh, the square footage is in there. Let me see it. I thought it was. I'm sorry.
It gives a sketch, but it doesn't have any dimensions that I thought were.
Is this that building on the corner?
Yes.
Two-story long.
Yeah, the landlord. Second story is not, it's occupied by the landlord, actually. It's residential, yeah. I can get that for you. I'm sorry, I don't have it right off.
It just, you know, I don't know the council or market at all. Did you, was there a real estate agent involved in the transaction at all? Or is it just someplace that the college has been for years or is this a new expansion?
We've been there for. Remember the date.
Oh gosh, we looked.
Provided for the post audit. Um, I mean. I mean, since the nineties. The nine men in there since the nine. And we, so we haven't had a rate increase since twenty seventeen either, so.
Well, that's the thing, I, just looking at the lease rate and the fact that the college is responsible for paying the property taxes, this is more than what is generated in downtown Augusta, you know, most of what's going on down there. So that's, you know, it's kind of a, from a landlord's perspective, and this is the way I look at a lot of things, is we're the best tenant they're ever gonna have. And I just wanna make, you know, I, I'll, I'll vote in favor of it, it's fine, but it's just, I would be more concerned if it was a larger one, just for future reference, just whether or not there was a market study done, whether properties were available. If an agent wasn't involved, you know, those sorts of things, because, you know, and not having a rent increase since twenty seventeen is all great and all, but I haven't seen rents increase in downtown Augusta in fifteen or twenty years. And, you know, or in downtown Long Island as far as that goes. And so I think our market is probably considerably better than Council Grove and just want them to keep that in mind going forward. I, I really don't like the notion that there's an increase three years from now, because I don't see the demand of Council Grove changing in three years. And if we're paying the property tax, they're not gonna have it.
Landlords paying the property tax.
I think that's what the lease said.
I think it says landlords shall be responsible for payment. Yeah, yeah.
And then we pay this liability.
Our property, yeah, our property.
And we did look at other space. That's that, we had to be close because the students have to walk over, but we looked at space right around there and everything required a remodel for us to occupy that space. And so then you got into, okay, now we're gonna have to ask for money for a renovation.
Right.
Versus, this is money that we're not asking for additional money to be put into the budget. It's already within the budget that we have. So we're not asking for additional funds.
Yeah, and it's good, that's awesome that it's both there.
Thank you, Heather. Appreciate that. It makes me feel very much more comfortable.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Winslow?
Yes.
Trustee Sheer?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
No. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I so moved, we approved the consent agenda.
Have a second.
I'll second.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Winslow?
Yes.
Trustee Sheer?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
It starts on your board book on page two oh one. Uh, no changes to the first page, ESOM's report with the, those KPIs. We've included again this month, uh, some, uh, KPI reports from some of the strategic initiatives, the high flex classrooms which allow flexibility and Zoom capability. Got a KPI on the funding for the laptop initiative to, the one on page two oh four is in, um, relationship to Tableau, which you folks approved the purchase of a few months ago. That's being implemented in AR to start off with. We also have, uh, a KPI that speaks to researching and submitting grant applications and identifies in there that currently the IR office is managing approximately one point seven million dollars in grant funds. Tons of grants available, but you gotta be strategic about what you apply for, because all of them require either human resources or matching, uh, financial resources or something. So, uh, our folks are really good about identifying appropriate grants for us to try and participate in and apply for. Uh, the Adelante mentorship program that's identified on two oh six, this KPI. Uh, this is in a relationship to our work with the Kansas Hispanic Education Development Foundation to bring first-generation Hispanic students to Butler through scholarships that are available, uh, through the foundation. And the mentorship program just, uh, creates some additional support system and pairs them with an adult mentor from either the community or the surrounding area or the college to, you know, develop kind of a support relationship with them and help them be successful in their classes and expose them to, you know, a network of professionals. And then the last two really relate to the work that the Inclusion Council is doing to help identify specific, um, interview questions that can be used in all of our search committees that relate, uh, that will ask questions about diversity, equity, inclusion, and then help us look at how we establish, revise and or establish procedures for, uh, the selection of the search committee members. And then the.
I would like to just give my two cents opinion on this, which I've done before. I don't think in the year twenty twenty-two, we need to focus on people's race, gender, sexual preference or anything. It does not need to be a factor in, in how we choose someone or talk to them. We should judge them on the content of their character.
Sure.
And not check off the boxes of whatever majority or minority or, or whatever box they may fit in. I don't.
Yeah, we aren't doing that.
This intentionally says, we will establish procedures that include more intentional focus on diversity, equity and inclusion. I don't think we need
Well, just.
Intentional focus on people's.
That's what it says.
Well, let me explain it then, just in a little bit more detail, can I please? It simply means that we'll be really careful when we put our selection committees together so that they aren't always the same people. You know, it, uh, we wanna make sure we have a good mix of men and women. You know, maybe ages, uh, maybe it does relate to ethnicity, but, um, you know, we don't.
I understand what you're saying.
So it's just, it's making it, making it conscious.
Based on there.
We aren't, we aren't going through the list and saying, okay, we have to have, you know, someone of color. We've gotta have someone that's, you know, that's uh, has a different sexual preference than I have. I mean, we are doing a checklist. We're trying to make sure that we're broad-based in how we approach our selection.
I would just like to see people not discriminated or.
We, we aren't doing that. We aren't doing that. It's just, it's just to try and make sure that we're being very inclusive and very thoughtful in how we, um, put our selection committees together. So there's good representation.
We don't, not exclude people for any reason.
We, we, we are not doing a checklist. I can assure you, Shelby.
The verbiage for them. Uh, Mr. Chair, I have a question on high flex. Why could direct that to Heather, please?
Of course.
High flex. The high flex classrooms. You know, parametrically, there's an answer to this. We've got, we've got all these classes that are now migrating to more Zoom, more and not in face or contact. Classrooms, are we keeping track of that? And are we increasing our student attendance across the board to support the high flex? And is it allowing us to reduce anything? Are we able to not send instructors there that we would have sent, or has there been any, uh, cost reductions at all, or any staff reductions that have been necessary, or?
So the high flex, right now, the use of high flex has primarily been to create an opportunity for a student that may have an extenuating circumstance and not be able to attend class that day.
So you have criteria?
We have definitions that we could provide of what high flex is. Right now, if someone is teaching a high flex class and a student, let's say, ends up with COVID.
Right.
Now they have the opportunity to attend their class from home because that instructor is teaching in the classroom with the rest of the class and the camera is, is pointed at them, the student can engage with the class. So.
Now, would that apply to clinicals as well?
No.
So they would have to reassess and regroup and maybe retake if they miss any because of COVID or?
Or work with the instructor in the facility that they're doing a clinical to make that up. That would be my guess. That's not mine.
Through nursing. Is that, is that the only, only, uh, program that we would have that kind of exception for?
Um, in terms of.
Well, it, it's just not just nursing, right? There are maybe no other programs that require absolute in.
Well, I think it would be a challenge. You could, I mean, welding, any of those hands-on classes, it, it would be a challenge to unless the student has a welder at their house to, you know, I mean, there's, don't we furnish that too? Billy Young will ask for that next month.
He's the only one that seems to get every single thing he wants, isn't he?
No, but yeah, we, um, high flex is very early pilot stages right now. We have just a handful of faculty utilizing that technology right now. Obviously, we've had supply chain issues with getting the equipment.
Right.
So, uh, faculty are on board with wanting to use it, but.
What's your three-year plan in a nutshell, in a summary nutshell of what percent you want to convert so that we could spread out? I mean, I'm all for this, so I'm just asking.
I'll, I'll jump in here. I thi- I think our goal as a college is to reach about twenty-five percent of our classrooms to have this technology capability. So faculty are able to have access to spaces that are lean, lend themselves to, uh, using this types of technology.
So where are we at now? Maybe three percent?
Um, I, I, that's in the board report. Um, I'd have to go back and look, uh, but there's, it's in the KPI at the end there.
I think there's eight.
I think we have eight or nine, eight or nine are classes, uh, currently that are outfitted with this technology. Uh, again, uh, it does go back to that supply chain issue. Uh, we're still waiting on some equipment to arrive. Uh, also, you know, faculty have to, um, essentially practice, right? This is a new type of pedagogy. And, uh, you know, we just started it last semester. This is brand new to the college.
I agree.
Yeah, so it does, it takes time. Um, you know, it's a different workflow than just standing in front of a class and lecturing or, or, uh, doing your hands-on component or the clinicals or, or welding class, any, any type of, of, uh, traditional pedagogy. This is new. You know, a lot of, a lot of this technology has evolved because, you know, uh, almost two years ago, we, we had a massive shift in, and how we had to deliver our classes. Uh, we learned a lot from that. Uh, some students are, are successful in that environment. Some students are not. So we wanna make sure that we are inclusive of our, of our student population.
I hated those classes, to be honest with you. I took a couple. I hated them, but, you know, that doesn't mean I couldn't succeed.
But it also doesn't mean that, you know, not every faculty wants to teach in that situation, and that's fine too. We're not here to, we're not here to to have that discussion. It's, it's all about having that opportunity for folks that are, are willing.
Much appreciate the information. Thank you so much.
Another area that would require being in person would be a lab science. That's.
Right, yeah.
They have dissecting frauds on your Zoom, yeah.
Just, you know, January work session, please put that on your calendars. Four thirty, we'll meet in here, uh, four thirty to six. Um, and then you have the activity calendars. If you're interested in athletics, pay attention to the athletic website because, uh, some of the games are getting canceled and rescheduled depending upon COVID situations on other teams and, and things like that. Uh, weather always turns into a factor, it seems like in the spring too. So, uh, you can look at that. And I would, you know, would point out again, we've got theater coming up in February, vocal music in March. Instrumental music is on here somewhere in April, yeah, in April. And so, um, we'll keep reminding you. And again, if you want tickets for any of the, you know, theater productions or the fine arts productions, let, let my, let me know in my office and I'll call and reserve them for you. Um, and that, because especially vocal music and theater get, um, sold out pretty quickly. And so if you're thinking you wanna do something, let me know and I'll reserve them through my office. So you've got them for sure. We can always turn them back in if you, if you end up not being able to come.
And, Mr. Chair, if I could, if I could just ask Ken a question.
Yes.
I love this. It's hard to read though. I gotta go get my giant sheet that magnifies.
Well, full disclosure, well, full disclosure, I put the board book together this month. Um, and, uh, usually it's landscape format, and this time it wasn't. So I will try my hardest next month to get it in landscape for you.
I blamed it all on you.
Yeah, it's my fault.
I, I just have one request is that we turn up the heat for the January twenty-fourth meeting.
I have Lily over here sitting on my hands there, ice.
I keep forgetting that there weren't there.
Yeah.
I turned this one all the way up. On a chair and reach that digit.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so moved, we adjourn.
All in favor, here you go.
There's a lunch back here for some of you.
Trustee.
Yes.
Trustee Winslow?
Yeah.
Trustee Sheer?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Want you to write that yes with a big underscore underneath it, okay?